Good evening, everybody. It's 6 o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll begin with the invocation led by Councilmember Singh, followed by the pledge led by Councilmember Thomas. Please rise as you're able.
Good evening, councilmembers, staff, and neighbors. As we gather here today, let us take a moment to center ourselves. May we approach this meeting with open minds and respectful, honest dialogue and a shared commitment to the well-being of all our residents, placing in priority our neighbors that suffer from a lack of housing and the lack of fiscal dignity of having their basic needs met without constant struggle. Let our decisions tonight be guided by wisdom, fairness, and a vision for a thriving community where everyone feels valued. May we listen carefully, speak thoughtfully, and work together for the good of all who call this city home. Let it be so.
Ms. Harper, would you please call roll?
Councilwoman Fugit, here. Councilwoman Helsley.
Audience members, the council meeting has begun. They need to be able to conduct their business. Please maintain quiet so they can hear their own discussion. Thank you.
Councilwoman McKenzie, here. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Ryder. Councilman Roberto.
Here.
Councilwoman Singh.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
Councilman Thomas.
Okay. Is there a motion on the minutes from September 16th? Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving right along to our agenda tonight, are there any items to be withdrawn?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, Mayor.
I would like to...
I'm not sure whose light was on first.
Oh, sorry.
Do you all know whose light was on first? It doesn't matter. Ms. Helsley?
Thank you, thank you. Selling public land is a big decision that can't be undone. A decision like this needs an open and transparent process that includes meaningful public input and thorough vetting. That has not occurred. Because of this, and after considering feedback from constituents, I move to withdraw item 11L.
Okay. Motion's been made to withdraw. Item 11L's been made and seconded. Are there questions or discussion? Councilmember Helsley, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Parker?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. When we gathered two weeks ago to discuss this agenda item, there was some discussion about how to move forward and whether we felt the need for a postponement and how long that postponement would be, or whether this process should begin anew. And I believe that, you know, based on the conversation that took place at that meeting and conversations that have taken place since that meeting, including a public meeting where, you know, members of the community were expecting to be heard on how they envision a public park, their public park, Chilhaua Park, being developed. But at that public meeting, once again, the community felt like a plan was being presented to them, and there was no opportunity to move forward with the conversation about how to invest in Chilhaua Park as a public park. Following that meeting, we received some amendments to the proposal, but I've heard from many in the community who do not feel like what the community has brought forward in terms of concerns was addressed with those proposed changes. So I feel strongly that not only so that we are considering a proposal that has gone through a process that we can all agree was a fair and transparent process, but also I support a withdrawal because I'm a resident of East Knoxville and I'm witnessing the only growing tensions that are in the community over this potential sale of public parkland. And so for us to be able to consider a proposal that we feel like has gone through a fair process and for us to acknowledge the tension that currently exists in our community, I believe that we must withdraw this proposal and begin again, and so I appreciate the motion made by my colleague, Councilmember Helsley, and that's why I support a withdrawal.
Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. At this juncture, we've heard a lot of, we've stepped back and we've heard a lot of voices in these last few weeks. While I will say that Emerald did due diligence as they were asked as part of the RFP in this process, holding meetings. It's been acknowledged that the city should have done more on the front end of this to have public meetings. The mayor's acknowledged that, as well as myself having meetings. At this juncture, I do feel that our voices, there are a lot of voices in our community that have been very hesitant to come out and to speak up for various reasons, and those that have been shared with me is fear of being attacked, fear of being bullied. And that's not our community, and that's not civil, the way that we civilly have discussions and disagreements. And it has been very troublesome to me to see our community divided, that we cannot agree to disagree, or we can have differences of opinion. At this juncture, I do feel that people have basically picked sides and kind of dug in. I think at this juncture, it's either for the folks who are opposed to it, the answer for them and the resolution is for it not to happen, that we just do not make it happen. But then for those who I will call silent voices, however, a lot of those voices have been reaching out recently. They have been sending emails. I hope that they've been reaching out to my colleagues, but they've definitely been reaching out to me, and I've also been knocking on doors and talking to people on the MLK side and in the community that would be most greatly impacted, one way or the other, if it were to pass and move forward, or if it were not to. A lot of those were parents with children, and I do hear those voices. Of course, we hear the voices of those who are in opposition, but I also want us to recognize that there are voices that are in support of this process and of Emerald being on that land for the sake of children and generations to come. And so because of that fact, I will be voting against the withdrawal because I would rather see us, as a council, at this juncture, make a decision, one way or the other, if we're going to move forward or if we're not. And so I just wanted to share that with my colleagues and everyone that's here, and thank you all that have taken the time to reach out to us individually and collectively to share your opinions. Thank you.
Councilmember Helsley?
I just wanted to say, this is not against Emerald Youth. I think this is coming across as a divide. That's truly not the case, at least from where I come from. I think it's all about selling parkland. This is, that's not personal. It's just, I mean, anywhere else is great. I mean, there's all kinds of property out there I guess they could use, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody realizes it's not a personal issue at all. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yeah. I think there's a lot of voices that want to be heard, and I think we have some speakers signed up, so respect for them. I'll be voting against the withdrawal. We can have this dialogue with the agenda item and let people speak. So that's what I'm, that's what I'm going to do.
Councilmember Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. This process, I don't think anyone, I think it's been mentioned already, is going to defend the process that led us to here, but what I can say is that what I see is a very good project that Emerald brought from a good place and did what they could, but the process fell way short of what we need to do. Once you sell parkland, you can't get it back, and so that's very important.
Point of order, Mayor.
Nope, nope.
Point of order. I think we're discussing the withdrawals.
I know.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm just giving you my rationale for where I'm coming from. There's just too many voices that we've heard from that aren't supportive of this, and I've heard from a lot, and I think we also want to look at avoiding a costly lawsuit that might happen. So for that reason, no applause needed. For that reason, I'm going to support the withdrawal.
Any further questions or discussion? Just councilmembers, I'm sure aware there are people signed up to speak in favor and against this item, as Vice Mayor Smith acknowledged.
Yeah, I would just add, it would be against our practice to do so, if we have people to sign up to speak. This would be a first for my time on council where an item has been withdrawn, where people would like to have input. There's been a lot of dialogue, and there's been a lot of been said about community input, and I think I've heard these councilmembers, at least a lot of folk, a lot of them say more input is better and more dialogue is better, and so I think I would extend that to tonight and respect the wishes of those who want to debate the item itself.
Okay, seeing no further question or discussion, I think we probably should do a roll call vote on this withdrawal motion. Ms. Harper, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Councilwoman Helsley?
Yes.
Councilwoman McKenzie?
No.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryder?
No.
Councilman Roberto?
Yes.
Councilwoman Singh?
Yes.
Councilman, or Vice Mayor Smith?
No.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fugit?
No.
Okay, the motion to withdraw carries 5-4. Okay, are there any other items to be withdrawn? Are there any items to be postponed?
Any items to be added by motion?
I've got a motion to postpone, Mayor. I'm making a motion to postpone item 12U. That is on at 962 North Gallagher Road. This is about removing the previously planned designation. Both the developer and the neighborhood would like to proceed through the planned process, and I'm working with law and planning on doing that, so we need a two-week delay.
What's the date, 14th?
Yeah, the next, the next meeting.
Okay, the motion is to postpone until October 14th. Item 12U is their second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion to postpone carries. Any other items to be postponed? Any items to be added by motion? Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Members of the audience, as you leave, if you could please keep your voices down as we're still trying to conduct business, you can take your conversations outside the room so council can continue their business. Thank you for taking your conversations outside the room. Okay. All right, time now for my mayor's report. I do just want to acknowledge that I think that withdrawal is a missed opportunity, but the city's commitment to East Knoxville will move forward. I'm excited about the strategic plan and vision of Muse Knoxville expansion with the expected commitment of donations up to $50 million. I'm excited about Zoo Knoxville, Grandiflora, Swan Bakery, Magnolia Avenue Redevelopment Corridor, our new Burlington Fire Station. We're not giving up on East Knoxville and even hope that that's true for the rest of council as well. I do want to just give a couple updates. As you know, this was just one agenda item. We have a lot of good things happening in our city, including today, we had a ribbon cutting to celebrate the third and final phase of First Creek at Austin. This is the city's first mixed-income affordable housing community, and now it has 440 new units open. I had the chance to tour the facilities, and 50 of the new units, of 160 new units are going to be for low-income seniors, supportive housing for low-income seniors, but right there in the same community is going to be another 110 units for families. So it's not just mixed income, it's mixed generation. So congratulations to KCDC, Kevin Dubose, and our Housing and Neighborhood Development Team for that great accomplishment. Obviously, the city's contributed millions of dollars to that project. This is the third and final phase, and very glad to see Councilmember McKenzie there, and Mayor Dan Brown was there as well. Another development today that had to do with housing is more good news. As you know, housing, we have a severe housing shortage and a lot of people experiencing homelessness. Today, the Office of Housing Stability announced the formation of a Continuum of Care Board of Directors, and they released a three-year strategic plan to strengthen our homelessness response. This new board brings together community leaders with backgrounds in healthcare, social services, local government, law enforcement, and individuals who have personally experienced homelessness. These new board members, their goals, and the strategic plan can all be found at noxtnhousing.org. More good news, Pleasant Ridge Road ribbon cutting will be this Friday. There's going to be, this is beginning of significant, I think $21 million of improvements, Pleasant Ridge Road from Merchant Drive to the city limits, adding several turn lanes, additional sidewalks, and a 1.25-mile greenway. Everyone's invited to come out and celebrate 10:30 this Friday at Pleasant Ridge Elementary School. More good news, Boyce Evans and the finance team did it again. I want to acknowledge that they have once again received two prestigious awards. One is the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. This is the highest form of recognition a governmental budgeting entity can earn, and this is the 38th year we've earned this award. 38 years, wow. How about a round of applause for our finance team? They also received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, and that's derived from the financial reporting we present in our annual comprehensive financial report, which coincides with our external audit each year. And we've earned this award for 39 years, so that's even longer and super impressive. You all keep our finances in order so we can make investments in housing and addressing homelessness and keeping our streets safe, so we're very grateful for our finance team. Finally, our rules of decorum. A quick reminder, we are here to do the city's official business. Those who wish to speak either to a specific agenda item or during public forum need to sign up with the city recorder before 4:00 PM. Do not use profanity, and when speaking to specific agenda items, you must stay on topic. Remarks must be germane to the question ahead of the assembly, that is, statements must have bearing on whether the pending motion should be adopted. Those who fail to adhere to these rules will be ruled out of order. For those who are listening, please note if you disrupt a public meeting, you will be asked to leave or escorted out. Thank you in advance for respecting these rules. That concludes my mayor's report. Are there any reports from councilmembers? Okay, we'll move on to item 8A, please.
8A is a resolution confirming the appointment of Amy Midas to the Historic Zoning Commission.
Motion made to approve. Any questions or discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, Ms. Midas has served us well in various capacities throughout the city, most recently on the Planning Commission. I think she will be an excellent commissioner for the historic zoning as well. Good appointment, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Midas, for being here. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So a round of applause for our Commissioner, Amy Midas. Next item, please.
8C is a resolution confirming the appointment of Christopher Sherman, Kiara Wyatt, Nicholas Bradshaw, and Leslie Presley, and the appointment of Don Jones to the Record Services Commission.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9D is an ordinance amending the chapter, amending chapter 7.5 of the Knoxville City Code, Article 2, Rules of Procedure, Section 7.5-63, 70, 71, 74, 75, 76, 79, and 85.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Singh.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make an amendment to this item addressing 7.579. This is the piece where if a council member brings forth a resolution or an ordinance that if they do not receive a second, they cannot speak to it. To me, that is the only period of time since there's Sunshine laws that a council member would be able to present their issue. So I would like to not have that, I wanted to continue as 7.579 originally and not the change that is proposed here.
So are you making a motion to amend?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion's made to amend as Councilmember Singh described. Any questions on the amendment? Councilmember Fugit, and then we'll go to Parker.
So I think the motion to amend is to withdraw that section.
Oh, yeah.
Is that accurate?
I'm just trying to figure out, is it a withdrawal or does it change the language back?
I think it's probably a motion to amend to delete that particular provision.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, if I could, I'd like to speak to that.
Yes, please, Councilmember Fugit.
Okay, so I will just, I'd like to give some context about why the committee came to that discussion. It was talked about quite a lot. So we typically follow Roberts' Rules of Order unless we make a rule different than that. So Roberts' Rules of Order says the requirement of a second is for the chair's guidance whether to state the question on the motion, this, before the assembly. The purpose typically is to prevent time from being consumed by the assembly if no other, if no one else wants seconds it. That's why you have a second, to make sure there's enough consensus to even talk about that. That's the Roberts' Rules. So we went a little further and asked, well, why do we have a different rule? Which, in context, this is why it was great to have some former vice mayors who'd been on council in over years talk about this. Their discussion was that really that was put in place because council often did not want to vote on zoning matters, make a motion for or against a zoning matter before the discussion by the people signed up to talk about it. So it was germane to what was going to be on the agenda, you were going to have to make a decision about it. That is why the legislative body at that time decided to change the rules basically for that. They did not narrow it to just that focus, so when we had that discussion as a committee, the committee talked about it and voted as a committee whether to change it to what we're presenting as part of the full ordinance or to leave it as it is. That's just the context. I want you all to understand, for those of you that are voting on this that did not have the pleasure of sitting through all those meetings, that is why the discussion came up, it was talked about, and why we learned that, why we did not follow Roberts' Rules about that, like we do every other thing on the agenda typically. We typically all make motions and seconds. Maybe it's not required, but that's what we typically do, so. I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything, so I'm just explaining that was the decision of the committee, so, to make that that way.
Thank you. There's several other people with lights on, so I'll move to them. Councilmember Parker?
Well, I just wanted to speak to some of what was raised because there are two sections that have a similar change to them. The other one is 7.571, and that's where we made changes so that, you know, the issues coming before us when we're in a clause ad judicial, like the agenda item on our agenda today, those items would need a second on those zoning matters. So that issue with the zoning is still included in here under 7.1. It's just the 7.9 section that would be changed when it pertains to city council members, not pertaining to the, allowing a, speakers on zoning to move forward. That is addressed under Section 7.1. And because the, at least that's my, you know, my memory of our discussion at the Rules Committee, was that there was discussion of this change for those coming before us with the zoning items, but this other item, I don't remember a large discussion around it. I did present my arguments about, you know, the, those of us who might represent a more minority population, who are bringing issues forward, that is our time to make our case. But when the actual vote happened, I was actually late for that meeting, and that happened within, I was, what, five minutes late? So there was not time for an extensive discussion by the time of that, all right? That's my memory of it.
Okay, Councilmember Helsley?
Oh, I love your eloquence, Lynn, but just to put it more bluntly, I guess, than you ever do, if you can't get a second, you're just talking into an abyss, like it's never going to pass, so I don't quite understand why you would continue. Like, it seems a little pointless, but just my two.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yeah, just more color to add from the meeting where we discussed this was that along those lines, a council member could bring a new resolution or ordinance every meeting and just speak for eight minutes without these rule changes and kind of absorb a lot of the time intentionally, whereas this is actually more in line with our default rule of Roberts' Rules now, where you need a primary and a second, or a motion and a second. So this is actually closer aligned to our existing rules than I think what Councilwoman Singh has proposed through her amendment. The other thing is that should the matter arise to be so significant that council wants to hear everybody speak, but only one person makes a motion, council can suspend its rules. So one of the dialogues we had over and over for six months was creating rules that are close to what we have without dramatic changes and making them in a way so that 95% of the time, they take care of the issues. And council can always suspend the rules, like we do sometimes, where an odd situation happens. And so to repeat, this is closer aligned to our existing Robert rules that we follow and is meant to take care of the majority, 95%, not to leave room for a bunch of exception cases to repeat. So that was the dialogue the group had during those, that meeting and the next meeting where we discussed it again.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, this is more in line with comments because I see valid issues here on both of them. And first of all, I want to thank all the work that the committee did, and it was completely transparent, and we all had an opportunity to join in whenever, so thank you for that. There's no transparency problems with this committee. Councilperson Singh made a point that I had not thought of, and that is like, according to the Sunshine laws, of course, we can't discuss things beforehand, and if a councilperson wants to bring a resolution, that's really the only opportunity that they have to speak about the resolution. So how would councilmembers know whether or not to second it or not if they hadn't heard the councilperson speak? I suppose there's information in the packet. The councilperson would be able to spell it out in the packet, so there would be that information. So there would be that, that information that, I guess, on which a councilperson could base a, a second on. But I see councilperson Singh's point. And then the other point, I don't know if they're in conflict or not, but there's been issues on zoning, on the agenda items, when it was actually more prudent for even the person whose district was in not to make a motion. Because sometimes even the district rep doesn't know at that time. And so sometimes it's better not to make a motion. Hear the speakers. Hear the, the discussion before you make a motion. So is there a conflict here or is there some way to kind of resolve that? Because that, that's an important part of the process, to not have to commit until you actually hear speakers.
Okay. Councilmember Fugate?
Thank you. You know, we've had a lot on it lately, and my memory's not the greatest. But I, typically, when things like that come up and people are signed up to speak to them, we hear from the speakers without a motion on the floor. So I think that is the difference. So that, because typically the mayor says, this many people have signed up to speak. She calls on the speakers, so you hear the debate and then you make a motion or a, in a second.
What about a situation where no one was signed up to speak, but the rep didn't want to make the motion, but he had somebody in the audience and said, before I make the motion, a motion I would like to hear from a speaker. Would that be allowed under these rules? They didn't sign up, but...
Oh, Lord have mercy, Charlie.
Yeah, yeah, you could still call somebody up.
You can always call somebody up.
But do I have to make the motion before I do that?
Lordy mercy, Charlie. You know, this is lawyer talk. I'm not one. I just chaired a committee.
Well, I'm just thinking, I'm thinking, I'm actually not trying to be obtuse. I'm actually thinking of real scenarios that could be happening.
Point of order, council, I failed to see that there's two people signed up to speak on this item. So if, I apologize. If it's okay, we'll pause council's conversation and...
As a point of order, can they speak on the amended, on the amendment now? Mr. Frost, maybe while you're here?
We could, well...
We can suspend the rules if we need to.
You could suspend the rules.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules to allow the two speakers to speak.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, we'll go, two people signed up to speak in opposition. Item 9D, first is Daniel Smith. Mr. Smith? Sorry, I didn't call on you sooner, but if you could go to the podium, turn on the microphone and state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council on item 9D. If you could turn your microphone on, there's a little button. Yeah, thank you.
It's these new digital things. Before I start, I'm a senior citizen with a low income. How do I get one of those houses?
Well, I'll have someone from the Housing and Neighborhood Development Department talk to you after you're done with your talk.
Real hearing problem also.
I'll have a staff member talk to you after you're finished with your comments.
Okay, I'll, I'll stay if you'll have somebody talk to me. The, the other thing is, I'm, I'm speaking against this motion. I have read it. It's easy to read. I think councilman Fugate and her committee did a great job on it. And knowing Lynn as long as I have, we would expect nothing else but the best. But I want you to put back the two minutes. Those two minutes are easy to talk about, but for the average citizen, those two minutes mean everything. It's insignificant in the scheme of life. I don't want to get philosophical. But when it's the only chance a citizen has to speak for or against an item, five minutes is not much anyway. It's been five minutes for years, at least as long as I lived here and I came here the day after the fair closed. Even if council gets frustrated at the end of the meeting and you have open public forum and a bunch of people speaking, it is their right, and you did get elected to endure that. And I've listened to some of that, and I would say it is endurance. But anyway, except for that, I'm in favor. Please don't take away those two minutes. Cumulatively, meeting by meeting, they don't mean much. And over the scheme of things, by the next two weeks, we've forgotten about it. And we go on to the next meeting, hopefully with those two minutes attached. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak in opposition to item 9D is Lindsay Uramco.
Hey, council.
You'll have up to five minutes to address council. If you could start by stating your name and address.
Lindsay Uramco, 1750 Hillwood Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item. I want to acknowledge that some of the proposed changes are just good housekeeping. And delivering a full agenda earlier is a real win for both council and the public. Transparency and preparation benefit everyone. But I want to focus on the proposal to limit public comment for non-zoning and planning to three items per meeting. According to the MTAAS survey and the report written by the intern at the Baker School, 72% of towns and municipalities surveyed do not allow speakers to comment on every agenda item. But here's the important detail the report leaves out. In nearly all of those places, their public forum is held before council votes on agenda items. In other words, residents already have a chance to be heard before decisions are made, making comments on individual agenda items less necessary. Here in Knoxville, our public forum comes at the very end of the meeting, after all decisions are made. And that's why the comment on individual items is so crucial here. Limiting, limiting this could silence the public in a way that most of the surveyed municipalities simply do not do. And Knoxville already has tighter restrictions than most. In Knoxville, we impose a strict 30-minute limit on public forum, while three-quarters of the municipalities surveyed imposed no overall time limit. Here are some of the answers they provided to the task force for the survey. "As long as it takes, no time limit," Clifton. "We allow everyone to speak," White Pine said in all caps. "Until all who sign up to speak have had their say," Greenback. "It's essentially unlimited. We've never encountered a time when we had to stop it. One meeting did go on for several hours," Tax Increase. "But we all stayed until everyone was heard," Red Bank. "If towns across Tennessee, many smaller with fewer resources, can commit to hearing everyone out, surely Knoxville can too." "And if concern is efficiency, a more consistent approach would be to move public forum earlier, before the agenda items, like the majority of towns surveyed do, reducing the amount of time people have to wait to speak at public forum, ideally with no overall time limit. Just a reminder, the council always has the ability to call, to call a public hearing when needed, something this body seldom does. Between this meeting and the last, I spoke with several of you directly, and I was encouraged by your openness and your invitation to reach out before meetings in the future. That kind of accessibility matters, and yes, I know we can all make phone calls and emails, but if you don't respond to those, then we don't know that you heard our concerns. The truth is that not every resident has the same awareness or access. And even for those of us that do, it takes a significant amount of time. I spent the better part of two hours in conversation with councilmembers this last week. Compared to that, to the three to five minutes it takes to stand here and address the full body, public comment is still the most efficient, equitable, and visible way for residents to participate. And limiting it doesn't just reduce our voice, it creates new burdens. The city recorder, who tonight, if he was here, would have called for speakers, so, you know, we value Will Johnson's time, but he'll have to explain the rules to public, to the public and track how many items each person speaks on and for what. So solve a problem that hasn't happened in two years, one which ended on its own without this proposed intervention from the council. Councilmembers, the survey data read honestly, showing that restricting comment on agenda, agenda items is neither necessary nor consistent with how other municipalities treat their people. And then lastly, considering tonight's agenda item that was polled, it's good to be consistent. If we're going to level critiques at the administration for not allowing for more public input on different things, it's, it's nice to be consistent about encouraging public input in this forum. So there's a better path, divide the question, as been suggested, and pass the uncontroversial housekeeping items and move this unnecessary restriction to the list of issues for the Standing Rules Committee or the next council to consider. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the people who signed up to speak on this item. We're back to considering the amendment that councilmember Singh has put forward. So Vice Mayor Smith?
Yeah, I just want to add some color to some of the comments we've heard tonight. The majority of, I think it was very clear from the Baker School's analysis that most of our rules around public forum are actually more considerate than other, all the other cities, excuse me, the majority of the other cities that were presented. So that, just want to hear you all to hear that Knoxville, particularly among the big four cities, gives public way more options to speak, way more time to speak, in multiple places. The second thing is, one of the things you realize when you break these down at individual level is that a change to this one impacts a change to this one. And so you can't make these changes in isolation. I think one of the comments that were made that is a good one is, if we allow for public forum in the beginning, we might have more people participate. But then you impact the items throughout the agenda. And so, in different ways. My point is, is that when you pull on one thread, another thread moves. So that's why these things can't be taken in isolation without considering them as part of the whole. Also, the majority of cities that were surveyed allow for a lot less time per speaker throughout the entire meeting than we do. So the public already has more time, the majority of the cities that were surveyed as part of this. We are extending the amount of public speakers who are allowed to speak at the very end of the meeting. And we're making sure that the people, we're, these rules, the net effect of them, is that different, more people will come and speak. So I just want to say that again. These rules have an effect, and that is that more people will come and speak. And that is the net effect of these things. So I think on the highest level arc of what these changes do, they sustain what we have, they provide order to what we have, and they provide specific alignment to the Roberts' Rules that we don't follow now. And they allow for more, more people to come speak. It's that simple. And so I just offer some caution as we take a scalpel to something that has an impact on other aspects of the procedures that you'll see if you take these in isolation. So I appreciate the amendment. I understand the intent, but they will have ramifications that we don't have time to focus. We can spend two more hours doing this, but we discussed all of these and trade-offs with former councilmembers, existing councilmembers, and included a lot of research. And these are a package for a reason, not just because we wanted to do it in one fell swoop.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yeah, on the amendment proposed by councilperson Singh, that does raise an interesting point. And I, I want to make a couple more comments on it, and then I'll be done. There is kind of a problem there with us not being able to speak through the sunshine law, and that's a good thing. But then this kind of conflict there where someone doesn't have a chance to express themselves at a referendum, or a resolution, rather, if they don't get a second. On the other hand, there is the packet, so there is some context. And there is a way, it's more of a courtesy thing, but I've seen it happen, where a councilmember will second another motion without really committing to that vote, but just to, for the purpose of discussion. I don't have an answer to this tonight, but I think I would defer to the, the committee, and we can see how this plays out. And one of the things that's comforting to me is a couple of items down, there's a Standing Rules Committee, and we can see how this plays out. And if it, and we will be watching. And thank you for bringing this issue. And if, depending on how it plays out in the context of the real world, let's say, then we will have an opportunity to, to alter it. So I would defer, at this point, to the committee, but making a note of the very good observation that councilperson Singh made.
Councilmember Fugate?
Thank you. I was just gonna say, thank you, Councilwoman Charlie, for, Councilwoman Thomas, rather. That was rather familiar, Councilwoman Charlie. Councilwoman Thomas, about the Standing Rules Committee, because that's the whole purpose of the Standing Rules Committee. Anytime you make a change to any rule, we have to see how it plays out. A Standing Rules Committee exists, and items can be referred to them as needed to look at and bring back suggestions to the body. So I'm glad you pointed that out because I don't think it'll be another 25 to 30 years before we look at the rules again.
Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. Along those same lines of what we're discussing, I think it's important for council to know that we did not finalize discussion of this rule as a committee. We sent this forward because there was a vote on these changes to this rule, but I made proposed changes to this rule that are left with the committee and will be reviewed by the Rules Committee when they reconvene. So additional changes to this specific rule that, that councilmember Singh wants to remove is already on the agenda to be reviewed further by the Rules Committee as soon as it reconvenes. So it, it doesn't, if, if there are questions about it at this meeting, which I have expressed my concern about these changes, it only makes sense that we remove that item from this agenda item because it's already on the agenda for the Rules Committee for further review.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you. I just want to add that there were a number of items that were put forward to that first meeting as well. So again, treating these in isolation doesn't, doesn't appreciate the whole context of what was changed. We brought forward things where there were majority consensus. That's what you have before you. Items that we either couldn't get to, or there was disagreement on, or just wanted to wait till the new council came. There's more than one of those waiting. So this is one of those items, along with many others. So with that, any other comments or just call the question?
Okay, he's called for the question. All those in favor of calling for the question, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the question's been called, we're gonna vote on that amendment. All those in favor of this amendment? Does everyone understand the amendment? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? I don't know what those numbers are. I guess we'll do a roll call. Please do, please do a roll call on the amendment.
Councilwoman Singh? Vice Mayor Smith? Councilman Thomas?
No, but for the reasons I gave.
Councilwoman Fugate? Councilwoman Helsley? Councilwoman McKenzie?
No.
Councilwoman Parker? Councilwoman Ryder? Councilwoman Roberto?
No.
Okay, the motion to amend fails. 7-2. Back to the original motion, not amended. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Did you get the, we did a roll call? Was it 7-2 again?
He said 2.
Raise your hand if you were no.
It's 33.
The whole thing, 2 against, so it passes, 7-2.
Okay. Oh, oh. I, I forget, the law director mentioned that we might need to read that on emergency, or, do you want to explain?
Yeah, this is, coming to you on second reading. It passed five-two, as I recall, last time out. But there is a provision that says when you're changing council's standing rules for procedure, that you have to have a two-thirds vote. And five is more than two-thirds of seven, but it's not more than two-thirds of nine. And so typically, we have said it's the council members who have been elected and not just the council members who are present. So in order to avoid that problem in this situation, it would be appropriate to have a motion to amend this to emergency and pass it on emergency with at least six votes.
Okay, vice, motion's been made to consider this on an emergency basis.
And I'm sorry, you'll have to, you can by consent withdraw the previous vote. I meant to, to have this conversation before we actually had the vote.
Yep.
And I forgot, and I apologize for that.
Is there a motion to redo this vote?
As long as everybody votes the same.
Okay, okay, motion's made and seconded. All those in favor of redoing this vote because of what the law director just said, and please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, motion to redo it carries. Is there a motion to read it on emergency basis?
So moved.
Okay, the motion's been made to read it on the emergency basis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Then we need to vote on it again?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, now it's, we're reading it on an emergency basis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries, seven-two, on an emergency basis. Thank you for the adding, you know, dealing with that legal clarification.
Sorry to put you through that.
That's all right. Next item, please.
Nine E is an ordinance amending chapter 7.5 of the Knoxville City Code, Article Two, Rules of Procedure, by adding section 7.8-88, Rule 27, Electronic Participation, whereby establishing the ability to allow council members to participate in meetings by electronic means under specific circumstances.
Moved to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion, council? No. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine F is an ordinance to amend chapter 7.5 of the Knoxville City Code, Article Two, Rules of Procedure, by adding section 7.8 dash, or 7.5-89, Rule 28, Rules Committee, whereby establishing the city rule, the city council rules committee.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion, councilmember Thomas?
Yes, just to kind of underline what I said before, this gives us an opportunity to let this play out and see what needs tweaking. I assume this committee is open to the public?
Yes, all meetings are public. It's a city meeting.
That's right. And so I, but I would, sincerely, I would encourage people who have these valid questions that we heard, come to these meetings and discuss your problems with them, and we will try to be flexible and amend things as needed, so.
Okay. Vice Mayor, oh no, Vice Mayor Smith?
I was just to add, there's room for councilmembers who really want to participate.
Okay, councilmember Fugit?
I was just going to say, just so, I think to manage folks' expectations, I suspect that the Standing Rules Committee will not convene until early next year after the election. The task force is set to sunset in October. And so work will move forward to the Standing Rules Committee at that time.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yeah, just a footnote, in regard to Councilman Smith's comments, you know, I know the, the committee worked really, really hard to put this together, and there are some interchangeable parts. And I think some time was given away, and then some opportunity to speak was added. So we will see how this plays out, but we really value public participation. And if these new rules don't grant that much, we will seriously taking, take an opportunity to change them. And again, I want to thank the committee that did all this hard work on it, because it wasn't an easy job. Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine G is an ordinance amending chapter 26, Article Four, Division Three, Section 26-410 of the Knoxville City Code, increasing maximum wrecker rotation fee for Class A vehicles not involved in a collision towed to a city lot at the direction of a police officer.
Moved to approve.
Motion made to approve, is there a second? And seconded, any, councilmember Thomas?
Yeah, well, this is just one layperson's opinion, but I think the current towing rate should be sufficient as is, so I'll be voting no.
Any further comments or questions? Councilmember Ryder?
Um, yeah, could I, is Mr. Bradshaw here?
He is, or he was. Mr. Bradshaw, there he is.
Since, so there was a question raised, Mr. Bradshaw spoke last time and also spoke to me at one of the city events recently. So, Mr. Bradshaw, do you mind, for everyone's benefit, explaining why we're voting on this and how it interacts with what we voted on in the past?
Sure, there's two types of toes in the city. This is rotation toes, which are the toes that are ordered by a police officer to go to a, a city lot for violation of code. The other type of, you guys last raised that in 2022. The other type of toes are, are toes that are like a private property, your business or commercial interests, just separate. You raised those last year. But these are the rotation toes. The, the, all, there's multiple categories of toes for different types of vehicles and different collisions, non-collisions, et cetera. We, you guys raised the toes in 2022 for, for this, for rotation-based toes by 50% for every category across the board, except for this, this one cutout, which was a Class A vehicle, light duty vehicles, cars and trucks, that were not involved in a collision. That was only raised 25%.
So the same tow companies respond to these as the other? It's not different tow companies?
Uh, they are different. The, the rotation toes, there's a, there's a much higher standard and more oversight from the police department, wrecker inspector. There's a, there's a sort of a stricter set of rules to be on the rotation toes. Not every tow company is a rotation company. There's only, I think, about eight that are authorized to do toes for the city. And there, they qualify for these rotation-based toes.
Okay, but these are private contractors, and if you're doing certain type of toes, you get paid a higher rate, but if you're doing this type of tow, you are getting paid less?
That's right.
Because we increased the others, but we didn't increase this one?
That's correct.
Is there a reason why we, when we raised the others, we didn't raise this one?
Uh, I think it's because of such a, I think it's because it's a high volume. This Class A non-collision's probably 80-plus percent of all toes.
Okay. So a Class A non-collision, is that like an abandoned car that gets towed?
Yeah, there's a specific set of criteria in the code that explains the circumstances under which a towed is authorized by a police officer. But they all have to do with something in a right-of-way post-accident. Maybe it was involved in a, some kind of a criminal activity, but it's a very defined set of circumstances defined in the code as to what you can tow for this.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the clarity. I think I saw one of these last evening. There was a car abandoned in front of a neighbor's house, and after a period of time, KP, they called KPD out, and there was a tow truck that arrived to tow that vehicle.
Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven-two. Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw. Next item, please.
Nine H is an ordinance to amend the chapter two, article eight, division five code, section two-dash-nine-eighteen of the Knoxville City Code, raising the threshold for performance and payment bonds and amending the required amount of those bonds to align with state law.
Moved to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Ten I is a resolution approving an appeal by Tom Hopkins of the Ferber Company of the denial by the Board of Zoning Appeals of five variances to increase the maximum allowable sign height and area for three-directional signs for property located at zero Midway Road, CH2, zoning district, fourth, sorry, fourth council district, parcel ID 074101, BZA file, BZA dash twenty-five dash zero-zero-five-five.
Uh, councilmembers, we will first see if the appellant is, is the appellant or someone representing the appellant is present. Okay, you can, is it just one person? Okay, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Um, yeah, my name's Tom Hopkins. I'm with the Ferber Company. We are developing a truck stop on Midway Road, the northeast corner of Midway and I-40. We came into the zoning appeals for a high-rise interstate sign that was, you know, respectfully denied. In that same variance, we had these three-directional signs. In my opinion, it was kind of glossed over. Obviously, the high interstate sign took most of the conversation. These three-directional signs are, you know, a couple feet taller and a, I think this one's 32 square feet. I think the limit is nine. They are about 300 feet off each road, off Midway Road, and over 300 feet off the interstate. It's about a 15-foot elevation, so we're going to have an access road that goes up about 15 feet in elevation, and then there'll be our store. So again, our hardship here is visibility. We don't see any concerns of them, our hardship is the visibility, therefore, we don't see any, you know, eyesore issues with them being seen from the road. We don't really think they'll even be seen from the road. They'll be, you know, there to help truck traffic and safety navigating throughout our site.
Okay.
Yeah.
That concludes your comments?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. There's one person signed up to speak in opposition to this appeal, Kevin Murphy. If you could state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Kevin Murphy, 4508 Murphy Road. I'm here as a board member of Scenic Knoxville. I want to call your attention to the zoning ordinance. The section 16 dot three deals with variances, and on the first page of the handout that I gave you, I have subsections E and F on there. Subsection E is standards for granting a variance, which, underneath that E5 states, and paraphrasing, but it states that the granting of any variance will not be in conflict with the general plan for development. Now, y'all are really aware of the signed ordinance, but you're probably not as aware of the East Knox Community Plan. It was adopted by Planning Commission, County Commission, and Knoxville City Council in November of 2017. And by that ordinance, it was incorporated into the Knoxville, Knox County General Plan, which is the city's general plan for development that, that standard five refers to. So the East Knox County Plan is actually something that you can't be in conflict with when you grant a variance. But these variances, they do grant conflict with that East Knox Plan. The plan was a follow-on to the rezoning and approval of the Midway Business Park back in 2016, where the county made a promise that while the business park was being approved, it was going to commit itself to preserving the rural character of East Knox County. Development of that plan involved a stakeholder committee of representatives from the area, an ice cream social for community input, interviews with community members, community confirmation session, and then finally, a review session of the actual draft. Elaine Clark, who is one of the stakeholder committee members, she asked me to tell you that the final plan had and continues to have significant community support. That plan significantly addressed, specifically addresses those parcels in the city at the interchange of Midway Road. On page, now I've got that, I think, on the fourth page, so the backside of the second page of your handout. On page 51 of the plan, it recommends rezoning the parcels, which at that time were C4, recommends rezoning those to a less intense zoning district that matches the community plan's strategic direction. That recommendation to rezone, it hasn't been followed through. When we did recode in 2019, those went from C4 to CH2, which is really equivalent, just, yeah. So that hasn't been followed through. But larger and taller signs, even for directional, are not what the East Knox Community Plan envisions. And a gas station or truck stop at that interchange is, in fact, exactly what the residents were worried about. Hence, that recommendation to rezone those parcels to something less intense. The plan discussed the potential instead for a visitor's center or an outdoor outfitter outpost that would serve as a gateway to activities in the East Knox County, like the Seven Islands Birding Park or floating the French Broad River. So granting these variances for larger and taller directional signs, it directly conflicts with the East Knox Community Plan, which is an incorporated component of the city's general plan for development. Furthermore, section F of these standards, or sets out some requirements for granting a variance, the applicant has burdened proof to show you that the literal enforcement of the ordinance will result in an unnecessary hardship. I've listened, and I'm trying to figure out what the hardship is for these directional signs, and I haven't heard that. Directional signs are internal signs that direct the driver once on or in the vicinity of that property. The heights and sizes specified in the ordinance are not arbitrary, and the applicant should comply with them. Finally, I'll just focus on this, and there's two variances about sign-square footage requesting to go from like, an allowed 12 square feet to up to 32 square feet. Well, how big is 32 square feet? That's three foot by four foot. That's the first sign. And I was wondering, well, how big are some signs on the, on the roadway? So on the last page of your handout, I've got some, a table from the manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, chapter two. It's got a side, you know, some tables for regulatory signs. For conventional roads, like one-lane, two-lane roads, you know, that we're used to driving on in our neighborhoods, you don't see anything larger than a three-by-four. And speed limit sign in your neighborhood, you know, street is, you know, which is, this is going to be an access road going up from Midway Road up to this gas station parcel. It's going to be a two-lane road. You know, those signs are two and a half by three foot, so seven and a half square feet. A 12-foot square foot sign, which is allowed by ordinance, that's the size that you see on an interstate for some things like, you know, the finds double sign, or maybe no-thru trucks, or even the truck speed limit sign. So if a truck can read a speed limit sign on the interstate that's three foot by four foot, they can probably read the directional sign on a two-lane road saying that it's, you know, truck entrance and exit, which is what those are. So.
Mr. Murphy, your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hopkins, you have up to two minutes for rebuttal, if you wish. You're not obliged, but you have two minutes.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, again, I'm not here to, you know, fight, fight everybody on this. I'm not willing to, you know, go to my grave on this, but I do just want to say, you know, again, our hardship, like you mentioned, is going up that road. It's a pretty steep incline hill. There's a hope for future development down the road. Again, you know, call it what you will, but that's what we are defining our hardship as, is visibility due to the topographic nature of the, of the site. And then, yeah, just, you know, have a safe traffic flow. But I respect your guys' decision. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, that concludes the conversations, comments from the appellate, appellate. Councilmember Ryder?
Uh, yes. Mr. Frost, as we consider how we might vote on this, could you review the standards to grant a variance?
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Ryder. As Mr. Murphy alluded to earlier, it's in the zoning code, section 16.3. The first part is section E, standards, part one, variances will, will be granted only where special circumstances or conditions, such as exceptional narrowness, topography, or sodding, fully described in the findings of the board, which means this council, do not apply generally in the district, and that's the district where the property is located. Variances will not be granted to allow an otherwise excluded from the particular, a use otherwise excluded from the particular district which is requested. Part three, for reasons fully set forth in the findings of the board, the circumstances or conditions are such that a strict application of the provisions of this code would deprive the applicant of any reasonable use of his or her land. Mere loss in value does not justify a variance. There must be a deprivation of beneficial use of the land. Any variance must be, any variance granted under the provisions of the section must be the minimum adjustment necessary for the reasonable use of the land. Part five, the granting of any variance is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this code and will not be injurious to the neighborhood, detrimental to the public welfare, or in conflict with the general plan for development. Then part F of 16.3. Then, part F of 16.3, the person claiming the variance has the burden of showing, one, that the granting of the permit will not be contrary to the public interest, two, that the literal enforcement of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship, three, that by granting the permit contrary to the provisions of the ordinance, the spirit of the ordinance will be observed, and four, that by granting the permit, substantial justice will be done.
Thank you. In the time that the sign code has been in place, no variance, in my, in my knowledge, has been granted for any similar situation. And, and reviewing the discussion and the votes at the BZA, I'm going to make a, in, in line with their decision, I'm going to make a motion to deny.
Motion, there's been a motion to deny, it's been made and seconded. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to deny, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion to deny is eight-one. Okay, motion to deny carries. Okay, next item, please.
11J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Cherokee Farm Development Corporation to fund the Spark Clean Tech Accelerator Initiative for an annual contract amount not to exceed $100,000.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Knoxville Entrepreneur Center to provide funding in an amount not to exceed $350,000 to support a, building a thriving, accessible, diverse, and sustainable entrepreneurial community in Knoxville.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11M is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Knoxville's Community Development Corporation as the city's redevelopment authority, transferring $2,95,229.43 to the Knoxville's Community Development Corporation for the construction of the Riverwalk Greenway to Cityview Greenway Connection Project.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Drink of water there will help.
That's just what I did.
The, the purpose of this is to expedite this, the building of this missing link.
Correct.
People not familiar with this, there's a greenway that goes all the way underneath Henley Street Bridge, but stops at the railroad and down the river to Cityview. There's a missing link. And so, this will allow us to expedite that contracting and the work that has to be done by the end of January in 2027. Did I get all that right?
Correct.
Okay, thanks for letting me hear myself talk.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11N is a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the contract with PRI of East Tennessee Incorporated for the 2024 citywide facilities paving project, increasing the contract amount by $162,140 for a new contract total of $346,932.72.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11O is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for and if awarded, accept a grant application from the State of Tennessee Department of Health in an amount up to $23,000 for purchase, or to purchase educational tablets, advanced simulation equipment, and pediatric care tools for the fire department's EMS Training Academy.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11P is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Addenda with West, a Thompson Reuters business for online research services in an initial amount not to exceed $3,748.22 per month, or $44,978.64 per year.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Fugge.
Thank you. Just for my lawyer friends, is this what's West Law? Thank you. Heard it my whole life.
Councilmember Parker.
My question is, with this license, can city council members get access?
We actually do this by the number of people who have access to it.
Right.
And so, if we add people with access to it, it increases the cost, so...
Well, can't we add one, just one person? I'll let you guess who I'm going to suggest for that. Can we share a login?
Not if West knows it.
I did not say that. Well, that's just my one request is, you know, it, it might not be something everyone might want to use, because it is something you need some training to be able to navigate. But I know for myself, I would appreciate having access to it and anything we can do if it's not possible under this contract, at least consideration. Actually, what, what is before us? This isn't coming back to us anytime soon. How long is this contract?
I think it's a year.
Oh, it is a year.
I think perhaps with some options to renew. They won't let it go for long because they're going to go up in price.
Okay, I'll just make that recommendation, that city council members are considered for this contract in the future who want to have access, because even when we're talking about the Rules Committee, it's nice to have, you know, student interns come in and present research, but I like doing my own research. I like knowing what other municipalities are doing. I like to know what the legislative record is on certain decisions, and I like to do that research. And I don't see any reason why we wouldn't allow council members access to this, but we do have to budget for it. So, that's my recommendation moving forward.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11Q is a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend contract C-20-0173 with Johnson, Merriman, and Thompson Incorporated to provide construction administration services for the Urban Wilderness Gateway Project, increasing the contract by $43,675 for a new total of $359,376.75, and extending the date of completion to December 31st, 2025.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12T is an ordinance of the city, of the council of the city of Knoxville to amend Chapter 2, Article 3, Division 2, Section 2-450 of the Knoxville City Code to adjust the classification and compensation plans.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to public forum. First person signed up to speak at public forum is Denzel Grant. Is Mr. Grant present? Okay, he's not here. Next person is Greg Shore. Greg Shore, are you present? Okay, next person is Melinda Foster. Melinda Foster, are you present? Okay, next person is Mia Denise Brown. Ms. Brown, are you present? Ms. Brown, if you could come up to the podium and please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Hello, I'm Mia Denise Brown. I live in 1905 Dunn Street, Knoxville, Tennessee, 37921-4605. I was one of the ones that signed up to speak today about the Chilhauwe Park motion to sell, and I suppose that's not going to happen. However, I do believe I still have the right to contact the members of the committee on my own. Is, is that correct?
You, you have the opportunity right now to speak to council for another, you know, four and a half minutes about any topic you wish.
Including Chilhauwe Park.
Including Chilhauwe Park.
Okay.
Although they did withdraw that item, so...
I know, you did withdraw the item. Well, I was not, and still am, excuse me, I am against the sale of Chilhauwe Park. It's public park. It's not only that, it's historical park. It is one that's been around since the American Revolution, and in fact, it was owned by an American Revolutionary War veteran. And also, I wanted to tell you that it was used as a muster for the Confederate soldiers during, before the Civil War. It is historical because there was nine buildings that were erected on that site, and one of those buildings were built by Knoxville College students. It was the home of the first Appalachian exposition in which they displayed various items to promote preservation of wildlife. And there is lots of wildlife that live in the park. We have large and small bass fish in the park. The grandstand, by the way, the bandstand, by the way, is Tennessee marble, is historic in itself. President Woodrow Wilson's message to the people that came to that first exposition was piped in to the park. The park was sold, and it was two acres, 80 acres, and the water in there is the Little Tennessee River, is part of, of the Chilhauwe Lake that goes all the way up to the Great Smoky Mountains. One of the founders of the fair that began, because of this exposition, went on to develop the Great Smoky Mountains National Park. Also, I wanted to say that President Roosevelt came to the park, and he spoke there. Blacks were able to go there, but especially on August the 8th, which is Independence Day, they were, were able to go there and enjoy the park. It was the first amusement park, it was the first world's fur park. It is something that should, it should not be sold. It should be accessed by the citizens here in Knoxville and other people. It's very important. I wanted to say that there should be a fair there on those premises every year. That's what they wanted to happen there. The owner, the, the one that owned the, that was the Revolutionary War, he sold this to Bingham, this, and he was an entrepreneur, and he went ahead and wanted people to be able to use it for dancing, swimming, fishing, and yes, you can still fish in there. And Booker T. Washington was also one that went to the park, and so was Helen Keller. This is a historical place, and it should be one that all of us will be able to enjoy. Because I'm going to say it like, in like this, bring this to your remembrance, this song. "This land is your land, this land is my land, from California to the New York Islands, to the redwood forests, to the Gulf Spring waters, this land was made for you and me." And that includes Chilhauwe Park in America. So, do not sell this land. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Counsel, that concludes public forum, and without objection, this meeting is adjourned.